Trustee Withrow, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Is it? No?
Are we, are we rolling? Okay.
Okay, we'll do roll call.
Student trustee Masson?
Here.
I think she's on.
Here.
And trustee Vasquez?
Here.
Trustee Withrow? Trustee Johannes?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Uh, right here.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarise?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Here.
Trustee Quinlan?
Here.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you. Um, trustee Gonzalez, will you lead us in the affirmation of the statement of cooperation?
I sure will. Um, thank you. This is the board's statement of cooperation that we developed over the last couple of years. It says that Peralta Community College District Board of Trustees has been engaging in a process of reflection to improve our effectiveness as a board. And as a result, we've conducted a critical review of our work over the last several years through formal self-evaluation. I'll say it's ongoing self-evaluation as well, and we've established meaningful goals. The Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that has codified our commitment to set a bar for excellence in governance in the community college leadership and to lead by example for our colleges. The full statement of cooperation is attached on the agenda item, and I encourage people to look at it. But in summary, we've committed to build trust and seek to understand each other. We've committed to be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols. And we're prepared to model the behavior that we want others to exhibit. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action. And I'll just say from a personal point of view, this worked really well over the last several years. We're a much better functioning board than we've ever been. So I want to thank my board colleagues for helping me do this work. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez. And uh, tris- uh, Vice President Quinlan, is there a report of action taken in closed session?
Yes. Uh, this evening, the Board of Trustees voted in closed session today by a vote of six ayes and one abstention to release public employee number four, five, eight, six.
Thank you, Vice President Quinlan. Now we'll move to three point six approval of the agenda.
Move approval. Second.
I'm sorry, who was the first? Oh, thank you. Student trustee Masson?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarise?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll to three point seven approval of the minutes.
Move to approve?
Second.
Student trustee Masson?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow? Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarise?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So we'll move to three point eight associated student government reports. We have folks on the.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hey, I'm Christian from Berkeley City College. So A C C C met last Thursday, and we voted on various significant items. So the first being the Student Center for California Community Colleges or S S R for Student General Assembly Conference. It's happening on April fourth to seventh, right down in Santa Clara. And we approved for 12 A C C members to go to this um conference. Um, I attended this event last year, and I attended various workshops, I listened to speakers from different California community colleges. Uh, students, governments talk about the methods they use at their colleges, bringing out student market, student outreach, marketing, et cetera. Um, yeah, I, I definitely learned a lot. I, I can connect with a lot of different people. Uh, in, in my opinion, this is the best kind of opportunity for A C C students to learn a network. And it's great that we can attend again this year. Um, the second being the A C C has approved funding for a banner that will be able to put up on the, like, like a giant banner that's going to be on the A C C campus. Now, this will be promoting yearly elections that um, that happen. Uh, we plan to put a link tree and like an important timeline for all the, you know, um, important events for the elections and use it to promote the elections every year. Lastly, the A C C Council voted, voted on a theme for our 2024 commencement to be centered around ambition. Last year's was focused on that because of a little bit of conflict, so we found that that was the most applicable thing for this year. Um, that's sort of all for A C C. Just a quick, um, you know, uh, last year we had our Women's Career Panel in H M. This is one of our biggest events of the year where we had six speakers across different disciplines of STEM and business and et cetera, speak on their experiences as women, as women in the workforce and, you know, obstacles they've overcome. And it was a great event. A lot of people coming and, um, yeah, I'm got members from A C C to support it. And then, yeah, that concludes my report. Let's make this A C C all.
Thank you. Do we have other um, student government representatives online?
Hi, hello, this is Anete for College of Alameda. Um, first of all, I would like to say um, good evening to everyone there. Also, we would like to um, thank our former actor, acting president, President Barami, and also our former uh, VP of Instructions, Maurice Jones, for their work and leadership and support to A F U and to everyone at C O A. Currently, as of last Friday, we did have a, excuse me, we had a day called Educational Day where we had the um, uh, A S, the Alameda Chamber of Commerce come out. We had a couple of guest speakers that were talking about the education and, and how um, education has changed. It was a very successful day. Everyone was able to be there. We were there all day. Next, we do have a project in our F building for our Women's History Month where it speaks of all nationalities and different women of different cultures um, with different ideas. The first, we have a couple with the first woman, um, first woman in Oakland educator from eighteen fifty-nine, um, Elizabeth Flood, and a few others to say at least. We are also getting ready for our trip to S S Triple C in April. Um, looking forward to that, and we're also looking forward to um, we're also having our, sorry, Tasty Tuesdays and our um, basic his, our basic needs um, every Tuesday. And we are um, looking forward to um, hiring and looking for our new president coming up soon. So thank you and have a great night.
Thank you. Are there any other reports? No? All right, so we'll move to three point nine Peralta Classified Senate Report.
Good evening. Uh, first of all, I apologize for not being able to change my Zoom profile. Um, but we're just going to move on and pretend like it's my, uh, I'm on the beach, uh, which I anticipated earlier. So, good evening. Um, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Gilkerson, Peralta students, colleagues, and our community members. Tonight, I'll begin with two, actually it looks like three, of its Senate reports. Uh, first beginning with Ms. Hope Lane of Laney College. Classified Senate President. The Laney Classified Senate held its first listening session with Chancellor Gilkerson on Monday, February twenty-sixth with over fifty attendees in person and via Zoom. Items discussed included college infrastructure, uh, needed improvement, the need for transparency in communication from administration. Classified chaired are concerned with being able to embody their mission statements, including empowering our community, promoting student success. These disparities in comparison to other colleges uh, prevent the Laney community from being able to admit with um, mission statement around the organization. Nevertheless, despite our uh, challenges, they go on to say that we continue to embody the values necessary for students to dream, flourish, and succeed. Uh, Laura Ramos, uh, Program Specialist at the Laney Transfer Center, uh, who has been with Peralta for over twenty years, uh, will be sharing her thoughts regarding the changing demographics uh, with respect to aid within the district. Uh, mental health and first aid certification and training uh, scheduled for uh, during the mid semester uh, flex um, uh, occurred. Danielle Burrows can be uh, contacted for additional information on this resource at B Burrows at Peralta dot edu, and that's B D U double R O U G H S. On behalf of the Classified Senate at the College of Alameda, President Louis Markiris uh, reminds us that the All Classified Professional Development Day will be held during spring break on March, that's a Thursday, March twenty-ninth. Uh, agenda is forthcoming. Next, from President Tom Rida, Classified Senate President at Berkeley City College. The B C T Classified Professional Development Subcommittee uh, has been working steadily and diligently to pull off our second off-campus retreat scheduled for Friday, March twenty-second. The two main themes of this event are the continuation of of financial stability and wellness and a community of practice session that endeavors to enlist for collective interests, uh, specialties, and their needs to facilitate real world uh, problems and challenges. That is, to facilitate the solution for those problems and challenges at Peralta. During our mid semester flex day session today, classified professionals gathered to revisit the work we did back in December, which was our retreat number one, uh, with included staff who were unable to attend our last session. Um, and so we had few uh, bodies uh, there interested in retreat number two. It is the, the desire of our Professional Development Committee that B C C will establish uh, ongoing working groups who will regularly meet and make steady progress to improve upon the following five areas that were identified. Effectiveness, administration, culture and politics, operations, and financing. The Professional Development Subcommittee uh, will actually extend invitation to our uh, Peralta P D L C coordinator and to our Board of Trustees for this March twenty-second retreat which will be held at the Berkeley City Club, the other B C T. Even if you can't stay for the entire day, um, stay as long as you want and hopefully join us for delicious lunch. And uh, lastly, um, B C C looks forward to having Chancellor Gilkerson uh, attend a near future Senate meeting for our listening time. As the Peralta Classified President, I would like to acknowledge that staff continues to demonstrate desire and need for ongoing regular professional development. While we appreciate efforts to include staff in flex day planning, uh, let me remind us all that according to ED code, flex days are not intended for classified employees. Flex days are in fact typically designed um, out of an obligation by faculty uh, which the colleges support. And there remains an issue because not all campuses uh, implement equal programming for staff, even during mid semester flex events like today. Generally speaking, district administrative center employees don't ordinarily have any programming whatsoever. This is where we are still grappling with staff, and I would say the district as a whole, with what to do with professional development and what professional development means for staff. I would argue that while there is some value to staff participating in flex day events, flex days do not fulfill what we and other colleges envision for actual professional development. We've heard trustees in these meetings uh, comment on how professional development should be leveraged to advance our classified professionals uh, into administrative and teaching roles in part to address our high administrative turnover and to sustain our institutional memory and effectiveness. Even the most ambitious flex days won't be able to deliver on these lofty goals. So, I have begun reaching out other districts to see how we might go about implementing professional development at Peralta based on the successes of others. I'm convinced that we do not have to reinvent the wheel, but rather make a commitment to institutionalize meaningful professional development for Peralta. I would like to propose that we not only consider bringing guest speakers to us to share their findings and experiences, but we also consider making strategic visits to other colleges by Peralta visiting team. Let's see how others do it and then determine what makes sense for Peralta. Lastly, I am aware that uh, out of straight, out of state travel requests are likely heading your way for approval. As we are in a final spend down of I E P I funding, the Peralta Classified Senate urges the board to approve this, these travel requests so as to make the best use of these funds before they disappear. And that is going to conclude my remarks for tonight. Thank you. Have a good evening, and again, I apologize for my terrible virtual background.
Thank you, President Gonzalez. Uh, with that, we'll move to three point ten District Academic Senate Report.
Hey, folks. Matthew Goldstein, President of the District Academic Senate and feeding back annoyingly right now. Uh, thanks as always for having me on the agenda and the D A S on the agenda. I'll, I'll be quick. Uh, first, I just wanted to say once again, congratulations to our fifteen freshly tenured faculty members who were feted moments ago in this very room. It was a lovely ceremony, and it was nice to see our faculty recognized and to see them celebrating with their, their families here in the D O. Uh, I'd like to make a point I made uh, during my remarks a few minutes ago. Tenure is a big deal, and it remains a big deal, and it's constantly under threat, and you can make the case that it's never been in more danger than it is right now as, again, uh, public education continues to be defunded and uh, there are forces who would like to strip tenure from the ranks of our faculty. So, uh, don't want to go all dark on us, but it's important to remember just how valuable a thing tenure is and how important it is that our faculty use it for good. Uh, next, and I, at the, the risk of waxing too dramatic, let me just add to that. I would say that having the kinds of freedoms that tenure affords allows for the open debate and the informed discussion that really is the foundation of a free democratic society. So I, I should have queued music at this point to swell behind me, but I think you understand the uh, the importance that tenure has to us here at Peralta. Um, next, I just wanted to remind folks that the uh, P B I M summit that we've been talking about for months and months and months is on the calendar for Friday, March twenty-second, from nine AM to one PM. Again, in this boardroom, all current members of the P B I M committees will be attending. It will be an in-person event. The thrust of the first get together, the first retreat will be to philo, really to philosophize, to talk about what our approach to shared governance ought to be about, what its goals are and so forth. It will be less focused this time around on kind of the practical dimensions of shared governance. But we're hopeful that the principles that we hammer out together on the twenty-second here will inform those later discussions around the really important concrete things that worry a lot of us, like the details of the P B I M manual and things like parliamentary procedure and other kind of niceties that really need to be attended to. So again, this is a preliminary philosophical discussion that will lead to the kinds of improvements that a number of us have been asking for, for years. So we appreciate Chancellor Gilkerson's effort to make this happen. And again, it will happen in just about ten days. So thanks very much. Uh, I look forward to reporting to you again in the uh, weeks and months ahead, and uh, let's have a good meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, President Goldstein. Uh, so with that, we'll move to three point eleven Public Communication on Matters That Are Not on the Agenda. Is there a public comment?
First, we have John Beam.
Thank you, trustees, chancellor. How you guys doing today? All right. So look, I came with an extraordinary group of people. It's uh, International Women's Month, right? So I brought six fabulous young ladies that are representing Laney College in the sweet eighteen of the state championship. Yeah, thank you. So they'll be getting on a, on the vans tomorrow morning at seven AM to take the drive down to Mount SAC. They, when I tell you how fabulous they are besides their winning record, it's more important that they're playing with only six players, and yet they're beating everybody. And on top of, we have a freshman, Jada Hunter.
Jada?
Who was the MVP of the whole state. Think about that. And that happens because they have a great coach, Ramondo Von, Coach Brian. This group of people have been battling since last summer to achieve this, and yet they're on the brink of it all. And I wanted them to come here, and I wanted you all to meet them because it is a unique situation. Six people on a court for forty minutes battling the best in the state. And it shows you what you can persevere and how hard you can go. And I think it's interesting when I ask coach, how do they do it? Is it their talent? Obviously, we have the best player in the state, but he said, no, they have grit. Isn't that what Peralta is all about, grit? Right? We take whatever we, we get and we make the most of it. So I wanted to welcome them and have you all meet them. Ramondo, can you please introduce your team? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, before I, I get to my team, um, none of this happens uh, at Laney, at least for me, um, without the support of the wonderful people that we have at Laney, led by our president, President Bestikoff, Coach Beam, Dean Chang, um, support system Sakai, uh, Sakai Metcalf. um, support system Sakai, uh Sakai Metcalf, our academic advisor Douglas Cobb and our trainer Rick. Um, there's, there's only six of them. There's six and there's no giants among them. Um, they have beaten quality competition all year. We went into Fresno City College on Saturday night against fifteen. I think they played all fifteen people, uh, thinking that they were going to wear us down. But uh, like Coach Beam said, this is truly a team, just a really tough, hard-nosed young women. Uh, but they're, they're great people. They're, take care of their business academically. Our team GPA is, is nicely over three point oh. But again, a lot of that is the support that we get from our college with the study hall and all the other things that the college uh affords us. So I'll uh introduce my, my team. The North, the California Player of the Year, Jada Hunter. Jada not only was uh the best player in the state, she's also the best defender in the state. She led the state in steals at six per game. Um, just a wrecking crew, uh, one person wrecking crew. But she has a great support system, Adrian Blackwell, Talia Fahy, Alea Flukas, our smallest player who's also all conference, Lenaya Folsom, Gianna Gio.
Is that everybody?
Oh, and uh our amazing coach, Coach Brian, Brian Gardier, Piedmont High School. Again, it is, it, it has been a dream season. Um, and with the small numbers that we have, it, they really are just a bunch of really tough, hard-nosed kids who represent our district and our college really well. So thank you guys for having us. Um, we look forward to coming back here hopefully with a state championship.
Just so they're gonna drive down tonight or tomorrow morning, they play Thursday. After they win Thursday, they'll play Saturday. After they win Saturday, they'll play Sunday. And they'll be back here Monday with a state championship trophy. So that's the way we do it. I'd also like to invite you on Thursday at eleven o'clock in the field house. We're doing a, a women's leadership and symposium for our student athletes. We have some incredible speakers from the community that are all former athletes from Oakland. And if you would like to come, we'd love to have you. I know you came last year at Thera, so hopefully we see you again. Thank you so much and thank you for supporting our, our teams. Thank you, Rudy. Appreciate you. Diane somewhere back there. All right, we'll be gone.
Next, we have Ramondo Von. Next, we have Jeff Sensory.
There's only six of them. That is, congratulations Laney Basketball, man. Um, so um, uh, chancellor trustee presidents that we have and everybody else in this room as well as everybody watching at home. Hi. Um, I actually don't have a whole lot to say. I actually just wanted to see, um, you know, congratulations to the fifteen members of our faculty ranks that um are achieving tenure tonight. Um, hearing their stories was really, really inspiring. I was, I was happy to be just to even, even a small part of it. Um, it was, it was great to hear the, and these are my colleagues. And the thing is, I think, you know, the, the presidents that do the announcements and like, you know, the chancellor, they, they all know that these are just like a drop in the bucket. So many of us have these great stories. Um, the other thing, so congratulations then. The other thing I wanted to say was last week on Thursday, um, P F T members and, and met with a bunch of students in Sacramento, Sacramento for the, for the March of March. Um, this was actually not necessarily a, a union event per se, but it was mostly students. There were a lot of faculty there. There are even administrators there. And the idea was to do like kind of the opposite of, you know, what we usually do, which is we react to the kinds of things that the state do, does. You know, we kind of say, okay, this is terrible. We gotta go there. We gotta march in protest. We gotta say this is horrible. Tuition's going up or... And, and the idea for this one was to be a little bit proactive and just say, you know what? Right now, even though nothing's threatening us necessarily, you know, necessarily except for the existential stuff, that um, you know, we can demand more funding for, for, for our community colleges. And it was, I'll be honest with you, it was really, really inspiring to hear all these students. There were about two, three hundred students that were there. I'd say there were about fifteen students that spoke on the Capitol steps and they were, they were wonderful. It was really, really great. So um, so thank you to them and you know, um, I'm sorry that like, you know, I can't give a better accounting of what happened, but it was really, really wonderful. And hopefully if something like that comes up again, I'll definitely be public about it and hopefully, you know, get as many people that'll come along as possible because public and, um, public and education is in everybody's interest. Thanks. Have a good night.
Was that everyone? Thank you. Um, so we'll move to presentations, four point one enrollment report update. Oh, did I skip that? Sorry, three points, right chancellor? Got ahead of myself. Three point twelve chancellor report.
Well, good evening, Board President Gonzalez Brito, Vice President Quinlin, trustees, colleagues and community members. Tonight, we hosted a beautiful tenure reception in anticipation of the board's approval of fifteen faculty members who've gone through the rigors of a four-year process that includes peer and administrative evaluations, student evaluations, and most importantly, self-reflection. It is a collaborative effort between the tenure track faculty member and their tenure review committee with a focus on support of their growth and development. My heart was filled with the demonstration of faculty excellence in all aspects of the academic enterprise. The evaluation criteria are derived from this academic quality, skills and professional attitudes and behaviors that constitute excellence. On behalf of our district, our four outstanding colleges, um, I am so grateful for the deep conviction um of worth and dignity of the advancement of knowledge and its recognition of the special responsibilities that these fifteen faculty members um understand and have placed on themselves. I also want to thank the members of their tenure review committees for their service, encouragement and support. Um, the support of the tenure review committee process goes beyond just the official committee and I want to thank the classified professionals who serve in our division offices um who help with the tenure evaluation process, including our coordinators Carolyn Martin, Alicia Cabayo Christensen, Richard Kazer and Steve Patel for shepherding the process. I also want to thank Dr. Tina Vasconcellos and her team, Laura Leon Maurice and Sabrina Menrique, the catering department from Laney College, our incredible music and our uh marketing communications and public relations team for a wonderful event. And I want to acknowledge our incredible college presidents, Dr. Richardson, Besikov and Johnson for the heartfelt and illustrative remarks about our candidates for tenure tonight. Next, I wanna um thank our student trustees Natasha Massan and Naomi Vasquez for their um incredible work uh as the voice and advocates for students across our district. It was an honor to support their effort to host a meeting with leaders, student leaders from the colleges' associated student governments as we reflect collectively on how to get students more engaged, right? Improving the probation and dismissal process on our colleges and how we onboard and support new leaders. The students wowed me frankly with their thoughtful insights and I'm excited to see the legacy our two student trustees will leave. I want to thank trustee Gonzalez Yuen for joining along with Mark Johnson and counseling faculty uh member Gabrielle Martinez from Berkeley City College, who also helps support the day. And special thanks to our students for engaging and to Teshetta Henry in my office for helping organize the food and logistics. I also want to um acknowledge the Peralta citizen for their incredible reporting and recent profile of, of so many important individuals in, in our community, including student trustee Vasquez. Um, the profile humanized and showed um how her passion um and dedication to her role and I'm so grateful for the profile and congratulations. If you haven't had a chance to read it, please do. On March first, the district celebrated the Lunar New Year in style, transforming the district service center into a showcase of the beautiful cultures and traditions that make up the Asian American and Pacific Islander community. Presentations, good food, great company. I mean, how could you go wrong, right? As we ushered in the Wood Dragon Year, bringing evolution, improvement and abundance to our district. My gratitude to the entire planning committee for their efforts, including Chung Wai Cham, Boomi Savayong, Hezun Su, Julie Shachow, Benson Nguyen, Nikki Chow and Marissa Nikano and Jackie Bo. Um, I also want to thank Board Vice President Quinlin and Trustee Gonzalez Yuen for joining us as well. In addition to continuing my district-wide listening sessions and meeting with constituency group leaders, I want to highlight a couple of community events that I also had the opportunity to participate in. I was pleased to join, I think it's the, let me, we'll skip to that one. I was pleased to be invited um to attend the Pillars of Democracy um event at the David Brower Center. The panel included faculty member Alani Gastis, who represented Laney College and the Peralta Community College District, along with the Oakland side editor in chief and living room conversations founder. I was in the company of Vice President Quinlin, President Besikov of V P A Posada, other community members and Faculty Senate President Leslie Blacky Blakey, along with the Citizens Editor in Chief Lee Khan. Professor Gastis was ample, really amplified the work of Laney College and the district's institutions and talked about the importance of an informed citizenry and how our classrooms provide a place of belonging where really honestly, the spirit of discovery is alive both in her classroom and other classrooms across our district. So really grateful for that evening event. I was pleased to join California statewide leaders providing opening remarks at the Level Up for Black Learner Success Dinner Meeting ahead of the AMEN Conference this week. Alarmingly, over tw- over the last twenty years, the nation has lost over three hundred thousand black learners from the California, from the Cal, the community college system, including California, with participation rates among black students lower today than they were twenty years ago. A documented and drastic decline in access and enrollment um long before the wide reading, reaching effects of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Education is one of the strongest vehicles to economic prosperity and overall increased quality of life. And even so, its structures is riddled with unaddressed systematic barriers that the data show most harshly impacts black learners. And our goal really has been to mobilize policymakers, state and national leaders and community colleges to come together and advocate for leveling up for black learner success. This weekend, I, I was at the community co, um, I'm a part of the Community College Higher Education Access Leadership Equity Scholarship, known as CHALIS Research Collective out of San Diego State University. Um, and CHALIS is focused on examining the systems, structures and practices within higher education that hinder racial equity. I'm honored to serve as an affiliate member as the chancellor in residence. Um, and as a research collective, we conduct policy-relevant and practice-focused scholarship to improve the conditions, experiences and outcomes for racially minoritized students, especially in the California, in the community college context. These scholars of color include Dr. Eric Felix, Associate Professor of Administration, Rehabilitation and Post-Secondary Education at San Diego State University and the director of CHALIS and affiliate members like Dr. Angel Gonzalez, Assistant Professor at Fresno State University um and other masters and doctoral graduate students making a difference in our communities and education um and society at large with the goal of giving back to public education systems that shaped our own trajectories and helped us become who we are. I was pleased to serve alongside and co-present alongside doctors Felix and Gonzalez at their, of their recent research that focused on advancing racial equity in community college systems at the NASPA Community College Leadership Institute. I'm excited to announce that we've kicked off the search for the next permanent president of the College of Alameda. I am grateful to the C O A community for embodying the values of excellence and inclusivity as they came together to share what makes their college so amazing as an institution and the qualities they want in their next permanent president. I want to thank our partners, including doctors Helen Benjamin and Cindy Miles uh for working alongside our district's human resources office to steward the national search, aiming to bring forward a candidate um who's incredibly outstanding to join our community. And I want to thank our constituency group leadership for helping support um pulling together our search committee for this process. And finally, I want to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude to Dr. Diana Barami for her service as the College of Alameda's acting president. I appreciate her dedication and leadership during her time in the role, in particular during a crucial time of transition at the college. As she transitions from the role, I'm pleased to announce that Dr. Pamela Pam Lester has agreed to step in as acting president of C O A effective March eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Dr. Lester brings a wealth of experience in higher education leadership, having served as the president of San Diego Mesa College for eleven years until her retirement in twenty twenty two. She knows the Peralta College as well, having chaired the recent Laney College Peer Review Team for the Accrediting Commission for Community and Junior Colleges, also known as A C C J C. Dr. Lester's passion, empathy, experience and commitment to student equity and success um really brings us an exemplary leader and thought partner to College of Alameda, our district, and most importantly, our students as we search for the next permanent president. And that concludes uh the chancellor's report for this evening.
Thank you, chancellor. With that, now we will move to four point one enrollment report update. Thank you, Chancellor, Board, Board President. I want to welcome our associate vice chancellor, Dr. Herrera, to give the presentation tonight.
Thank you, chancellor, uh, board of trustees, college presidents, uh, Peralta colleagues, community members. Uh, thank you for this opportunity uh to present the enrollment update. Um, next slide. I'm happy to report that our enrollment um once again is uh trending up. We're actually up uh four percent from last year. And when we look um the trend over the past three years, um, since twenty twenty one, um, we're actually um up a twelve percent. So I'm happy to look, report that. Um, also, we're seeing this increase um in our F T S um across all four colleges, as you can see. Um, so I'm happy to show that um we are making improvements um in our enrollment. And I do want to credit, I believe, um, our Fall is Free, Spring is Free campaign for really, you know, contributing, I think, to this um increased um enrollment that we're seeing. Um, next slide. Um, I do want to show here on this graph that um while we are seeing um increased F T S across the co, across each of the four colleges in the district, um, I do want to bring your attention to the bar on the far right, um, that green bar which um highlights uh twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Um, our F T S, which uh represents our current funding floor from the Hold Harmless provisions. Um, as you can see, while we're trending up, um, we still um are not exact where we want to be from twenty seven, twenty eighteen. Um, and that's something that we need to um consider and think about um as Hold Harmless will be um ending soon. So, but I'm happy that um we are trending in that direction and we are making progress um year over year. Uh, next slide. Um, when we look at our enrollment uh by student demographics, we are seeing um increased enrollment across um age groups. Um, each age group has, we've seen increases except those for under sixteen, which is more of our uh younger dual enrollment students. Um, we're seeing increases across gender um and as well as increases over ethnicity and enrollment. Next slide. Um, as you can see here, um, across age groups, uh, our nineteen to twenty-four-year-old students continues to be our largest uh age group of students, followed by our thirty-five to fifty-four students. Um, that was, has been remaining pretty consistent for the past three academic years. Um, next slide. Um, when we look at by gender, again, we're pretty consistently across the past three academic years. Um, our female students um again are increasing and um we're continuing to have more um our female students than our male students. Um, so while that's consistent um across, we're still seeing that sort of gap. Um, next slide. Yes. And when we look at uh race and ethnicity, again, uh, pretty consistent over the past three academic years. Our Hispanic and Latino students are our largest uh student group by ethnicity, followed by our Asian students and our African-American students. Um, we're only seeing small declines with our white and Pacific Islander students. Next slide. Um, some of the other key factors uh when we're looking at enrollment and how we're doing as a district, um, when we look at fill rate, which is um the percentage of our enrollment divided by our... when we look at fill rate, which is the percentage of our enrollment divided by our classroom capacity, we are seeing our fill rate increasing over the past three years. When we look at swirl rate, which is the proportion of students who enroll in more than one college across the district, again, we're seeing a lot more students swirl across the district. And when we're looking at course modality, the courses that we're offering, whether that be 100% in-person, hybrid, or online, we're seeing, across the district, we're offering more in-person classes and more hybrid classes as we're beginning to reduce our fully 100% online courses. Next slide. So here in this slide, just trying to show fill rate across the past three years for fall and spring, and you'll see that our fill rate is steadily increasing for both the past three falls as well as the springs. I know there's been also interest in the fill rate by modality, so how we're filling by online, hybrid, and in-person. Unfortunately, I don't have that information at this time. We're currently still collecting that information, but as soon as I do have that information, I'll be able to share that with you all. Next slide. Swirl, again, this is just showing, again, we're seeing more students increasing this past academic year, the last academic year, those numbers are increasing across the district. Next slide. And when we look at course modality breakdown, here, we're showing that, well, the majority of our course offerings are still online. You can see we're increasing our hybrid offerings and our in-person offerings. So that's the trend that we're going. Next slide. And here, I won't go into much detail, but this just gives you a breakdown of the courses, specific course sections we're offering by each college, by in-person, hybrid, and online. And again, you'll see we're trending and we're beginning to offer more in-person, more hybrid, and we're reducing our online courses. And so why that's important to look at, we want to relate that to student success. And for example, here, we're looking at students' course retention across all four colleges for the past three academic years. And what you can see here is that clearly, students who are attending in-person have a much higher retention rate than those students who are fully online. Even the students who are attending hybrid are still being, have a higher retention rate than those who are fully online. So I think it's admirable that we are starting to offer more classes in-person and that hybrid, as we're seeing that students are retaining better when that's the case. Next slide. When we look at students' course completion, student success, it follows the same trend as retention, where students are completing their courses at a much higher rate when they're in-person courses than when they are online. The same can be said with hybrid, is students are performing better than when they're online courses. I know there's, unfortunately, I don't have the data yet on persistence. That's something we're still gathering, analyzing. And again, once we finish having that data, we'll be happy to share that as well. Next slide. And now, I just wanted to touch a little on some of the student-centered funding formulas, SCIF metrics. I know district finance will go more into SCIF metrics in more depth at a later presentation, but I just wanted to share some of the key metrics that we're looking at, just as a refresher around SCIF. Our allocations are basically around primarily FTS, supplemental allocation, which is our enrollment of low-income students, such as Pell, California Promise, and AB540, and student success. And so I just wanted to give a very brief overview on the SCIF and just to, you know, see, show that our Pell grant recipients have been increasing over the past three years, as well as our California College Promise grant recipients. We're only seeing declines with our AB540. Next slide. So just to show here, as you can see with the top, the top line, our CCPG students have been increasing over the past three years. We're making really strong gains there, as well as we're seeing increases on our Pell grant. If you look at the bottom two lines, those are our Pell grant recipients and CCPG students who have received degrees. And that's been holding kind of somewhat consistent, although there is a slight decline. And I think that just goes to show where we'd want to probably make sure that our Pell grant recipients and our California Promise students are receiving the support they need so that they're being able to complete their degrees. Next slide. Here, just showing example around our CTE students. And again, we're having an increase from the previous year in our CTE students. Again, these are CTE students who received Pell or CCPG. And again, we're showing some declines, but there has been some decline and we're kind of trending up again. Next slide. And then again, this just showing that for our AB540 students, this is where we've seen the sharpest decline in terms of, you know, of all the SCIF sort of metrics, where we're seeing a lot less of our AB540 students enrolling. And that's it. Thank you. If there's any questions?
Thank you. Justine Duffin Book?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. I really appreciate it. So kind of going back to what you had just last said, why is the AB540 student applications, how, do we have any data on why they're not applying?
I don't have that data yet, no. Yeah, why that's-
I'd be very curious to see, because that's a pretty sharp decline.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
It's President Quinlin.
Yes. Regarding the future of financial aid, our Pell grant students and our California Promise students, it's been quite a bit of news in the press about the, I don't know what you want to call it, the mess-up of the, the screw-up of the financial aid, the FAFSA application, put it off, put it off, put it off. And now, all of a sudden, people are required to fill it out in, you know, the next couple of weeks. Is there any idea of how this is going to impact our students and what we're doing to try and address this issue?
I don't want to speak for the Financial Aid Office, but I know we've, I know that they're trying to address this and being able to help our students who are trying to apply that. I'm hoping that we don't see that decline in our Pell grant or Promise grant students. I'm hoping those numbers aren't affected by that. But I know we're making efforts to reach out to those students and offer some kind of support to at least help them try to complete that FAFSA.
Justine Johannes?
Thanks. Again, also, thank you. So I just have a question regarding the graphs on course retention and course completion.
Yes.
So they sort of mirror each other, where, as you mentioned, online is the lowest, whereas in-person is the highest. So my question, I guess, is, the case is, students do better in on and in-person courses, but they prefer to sign up for online courses, but then they're not finishing, right? So if this is what's happening, meaning we know better than the new student, if you will, is there anything in place that, let's say, for example, whether it's course completion or retention, that if they say, you know, this isn't working for me, I'd like to withdraw, is there anything in place that said, hey, hey, would you like to try this hybrid? Would you like to try this in-person version as well? Or the same thing, if there's the completion issue, maybe there's something happening at the same time, in-person and online, and they can switch over? Or regarding retention, saying, hey, next term, can you please? Is there something?
I think that's a really great question, and I would defer that to the colleges. But I think that's, it would be interesting to examine exactly that difference in curriculum that's happening online and in hybrid, and what additional supports those online or hybrid students might be receiving that might be able to help them with either course completion or wanting to retain again. You are correct. Online courses continue to remain popular. The trend in online enrollment for 100% continues to go up. So that is kind of the challenge where we face, where online course enrollment, it continues to go up, it's very popular, but we're continuing to see that students do better with face-to-face. So I think that's just something that colleges and our curriculum will have to look at to see how we can better support students in both of those, in whatever modality they're taking.
Presidents, I'll be in touch. Trustee Gonzalez Yuan? Sorry, Chancellor.
Well, I was gonna, I look, Dr. Johnson, you wanna?
Thank you, Chancellor. No, I have some, maybe some general thoughts to share. So looking at trustee Johannes's question. I mean, looking at the statistics for Merit, the data I was able to marshal. At Merit College, success rate, face-to-face classes, in-person classes, is 72.3%. Okay? Synchronous classes, online classes, it's not that, it's lower, but it's not that far off. Synchronous classes, meaning the requirement is that everyone takes the class at the same time. So there is something to be said about the community and the contact, and that's at 71.7. You see a drop-off. Asynchronous classes, 67.3, when we, when students just take classes, I mean, take the course and can just check in when they want. And it's, so oftentimes, what I would suspect is, in the case of trustee Johannes's question, sometimes students, if they're not on a regular pace, it's difficult to ascertain for the instructor and maybe even for the student when they're not doing well. I think that we could address that at the colleges by continuing to invest in our early alert and having students and faculty and counseling be more tuned, helping them be more tuned to a student's progress, helping them be more aware of deadlines to withdraw, because that has, talking about financial aid, that has implications in terms of when a student leaves a class or withdraws from a class. But in general, if I could just share just a couple of things that might help frame the conversation around online instruction. Our researcher, Nathan Pellegrin, was able to look at 100 colleges in the state. If you take the colleges number one, the number one college would be a college that offers the fewest number of online classes. The college that is at 100 would be the college who offers the most online classes. I'm not going to speak on the other colleges, although I have that information. It may surprise, it surprised me that Merit College is 93, which means there are only seven other colleges in the state that offer more online classes than we do. Looking at the population that we serve and the compelling data that suggests that students are not doing as well, it begs the question of whether we should recalibrate and perhaps have a goal of reducing the number of online. Again, we don't want to preclude the opportunity for students to take online classes, because for many students, it is working. The accessibility issue, we get that. But at the same time, as a comparison, for example, SMCCD, neighboring college, Skyline College, solid college, 5.5% of their classes are online. CSM, strong college, 7.8% of their classes are online. So again, it just begs the question, again, different dynamics, different populations, but it just begs the question of how do we want to offer, how do we want to offer courses? Yes, we want to provide access, but we also want to be mindful of the modality that would enable students to be most successful on their academic journey, broadly speaking.
Thank you, President Johnson. Trustee Gonzalez Yuan?
Thank you. It's a really interesting discussion and it was sort of challenging not to get too far into the weeds, because we're not on the operations side, we're really on the policy side, but we're trying to figure out how to make policy that then makes the operations work well. I've got a bunch of questions. I'll try to be succinct and one of the questions that, you know, I had asked Chancellor about fill rates for online versus in-person versus hybrid kind of speaks to the question, President Johnson, that you're speaking of. If you, if you don't offer the class, you say, well, we're not offering online. You've just got to come to campus. Well, students will just go elsewhere. If they want an online class, they can go anywhere in the state at this point. And so we're trying to figure out, we need to figure out, well, what in fact is the demand? And I, so I think that's critical. One of the questions that I had about success, you've got success retention by modality. And when we look at that slide on page 13, I'm trying to figure out, how did you calculate the retention? Is that first day enrollment versus third week census? And so now that's our retention rate? Or did you also include then students who didn't pass the class? My experience is that a lot of students, particularly online, they're just shopping. And the cost of signing up for a class is pretty low. So if you get a high drop rate, it's not necessarily an indication that the modality is a failure. We don't exactly know that. It could be students are shopping, they look at the class, and then they say, nah, not now. Whereas my guess is that if a student actually shows up to the class, they're more committed to it from the get-go. And so now maybe we're comparing apples and oranges. And I think we really need to do the apples-to-apples comparison. And on this data, it's not clear that we're, that we're doing that. And so it's just, I'm curious about that. A question that I've asked many times, and I've still not seen our institutional researchers respond to this question. And that, the question is, what is the expectation of the student to invest in their learning? Do we know this? Because I'll have students sign up for my five-unit PolyOne class, which should be five hours of in-class instruction, but it's online. And then I'm expecting students to do another 10 hours of study of homework. And so if that student's taking 15 units, they're really full-time students. I have a lot of students tell me, "Professor, I'm going to spend three, four hours a week on your class." So for a five-unit online class, that student is not going to be successful. So then that begs the question, one, why do they have that expectation? And then what are our colleagues doing? Are our colleagues fully expecting students to really, if it's a three-unit class, do three hours in class and six hours of study for nine hours of learning? Or are we doing something else? Do we have, and this is a question for the Academic Senate, really, to try to figure out what in fact are our standards? And how do we measure that against success? But then, on top of that, the thing that I think we need to really research is what is the capacity of the student to learn? Do they have the time to put in? Or are they working too many hours? Do they have a place to study? Or are they homeless? Do they have a computer? Or are they working on a little cell phone? And is the class set up to have a student be successful in those areas? And I think all of these things are sort of complicated, which leads to me to my last point, and, and, and I really think this is sort of critical. How are we set up as a district to get feedback from the frontline professionals and the students themselves to understand these critical questions? To what extent are we structurally set up to hear from the Academic Senates, to hear from the instructors themselves, to hear from our classified professionals who really understand a lot about financial aid and student needs? And then how are we set up structurally? And thank you so much to our student trustees for building this out. How are we set up to get meaningful feedback from students? So I think this is a great start, and I think we'll do so much better if we can figure out a way to involve people on the ground who are living this reality so that it's not just quite so abstract. But this is a great start, and I really appreciate the report. And Chancellor, thank you so much for forwarding the questions that I had. I look forward to a deeper discussion. Thank you.
As per usual, I have a barrage of questions. I have four.
As per usual, I have a barrage of questions. I have four.
Cindy, you're learning.
I know. I don't have seven, I only have four. So, first thing, thank you so much for actually including two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen as data points, because I think that, um, as board members, we've actually heard the increase by, from our presidents, and that's really important, but it's increased, increased, increased. But without a larger context, we think that our enrollments are through the roof, when in general, we have to put it in context, especially given our budget situation going forward, where we are, even though we're increasing in the past three years, to where we were. And as I look at the numbers, we're still at a thirty percent decline from the, from the data point that you had put forth. And that's really worrisome, because we're doing well between COVID and where we are right now, but we're still doing very poorly. And so we need to kind of set up our structures and our institutions to kind of prepare for, how do we deal with the current kind of enrollment data sets that we have at this point, which is better, but it's still far worse than it's been. I think that's number one. Number two, you're, very interesting that your, um, data was that our, our age category is eighteen to twenty-four. That's really good. Um, that's really good, because in a lot of places, it's actually older, so that's really wonderful that it is still our college going from high school to that particular point. I think the question for me after COVID is really, and, and this is not asking for an answer, but it's, it's really just kind of thinking about, how have our students changed, or how has that category, that age category of students changed in terms of their needs? Because we know as a system that we are always full-time students, full-time students, but the reality of the matter is, especially after COVID, that's not what our students are probably able to do. And so kind of thinking about that question and always looking through that lens. Now, related to that, it's an incredible paradox. And that paradox is, our data shows us that they do better in person, and again, you've made that very clear here, that our students do better in person. However, the conundrum I think that we're in is that most students will take online courses. So if we decide to go with our students do better, therefore, let's not actually do online classes, you're gonna have other colleges that are gonna offer online classes that will capture our enrollment. And so, that's, that's crazy. But it is also, it is also the sign of the times. And I think to your point, Dr. Johnson or President Johnson, when we're looking at the San Mateo Colleges, they're basic aid, so their enrollment isn't as necessary, and they have, you know, uh, a lower percentage of online classes, because they can afford to do that. But when we look at our college, we won't necessarily be able to afford to give our students, but at the same time, we also know that we're not able to have them be as successful as they could be. And then, and then the last is, which is maybe kind of okay, is comparatively to the state, even though our success rates, I think, are still really terrible, compared to the state, we're kind of exactly there, if not a little bit over, which says a lot about where we are as a system in the state. But we can do better, and I think that that's kind of why you're doing this, so we can figure out how to do better. And so I had just, I didn't have any questions, I guess. I was just commenting.
Vice President Quinlan?
Yes, thank you for this report, and Chancellor, thanks for digging up this information. Uh, the question I have is, do we have any way to track the success of our students to transfer uh, online versus, um, in-person, how well they do when they transfer to wherever they're transferring to? Is there any way for us to track that, or do we currently track that?
We do currently can track that. We use the Student, uh, National Student Clearinghouse, so we can see where our students enrolled. Um, and I think, um, whether or not they obtained a degree or not, that's the, the challenge. So we'll know where our students are going, um, but I think it's still, we don't necessarily, it's, it's a lot more difficult for us to know if our students are completing at other institutions.
Because for me, that's kind of the central question of this whole issue. Are our students learning as well online, and are they succeeding with what they're learning online? Um, you know, it's, it's independent of what grades they receive here, or how successful they are here. They're transferring, are they successful when they transfer?
Yes, and I think we could at least begin, I think we could start by breaking down, looking at those transfer rates and seeing what's the different percentages are, you know, in-person, students taking primarily in-person classes, are they transferring to a hi, at a higher rate than students who are only taking online courses? Um, we definitely could take a look at that, at least, that would at least let us know if those, you know, if are, what's the difference, if in-person, and if they're doing well, then you would expect a higher transfer rate, just the CSU's, UC's. Uh, but it would also be really to focus in on, on those online students, again, to see where, where are they primarily, if they are having a similar transfer rate, or if they are not transferring after they're leaving Peralta.
Sorry. Again, my question's not transferring, but are they successful when they transfer? How well are they doing where they're transferring to?
Yeah, that's data we currently don't have. But I could, we can kind of explore and look into that, see if that's some data we would be able to obtain. I mean, we could look at where students are transferring to, we could look at completion, we could look at, uh, the completion rates at those schools, um, by cohorts, so if we knew a student transferred, they were part of that cohort at whatever new inst, college or university they're at, and look at completion rates that way. That's not exactly a one-to-one, um, because it's just so hard to follow students, there's no universal student ID that we can kind of pull to be able to, you know, track that student all the way through. But that would be able to at least give us, um, somewhat of an idea of, of how well they're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Herrera. I think ultimately, right, these are things that our policymakers up here can be advocating for in these conversations, and I think this conversation was illustrative of sort of what we need to be doing as we're hitting a fiscal plateau here soon, and talking about success, and really ratcheting up our success rates, and really having great conversations with our academic, um, leaders. And I know our District Academic Senate President has requested, um, to speak on this item, um, Matthew Goldstein, so I did wanna, um, welcome him. Thank you, Dr. Herrera, for the great presentation, um, tonight. So, a couple of minutes for you, Dr. Goldstein? You have a question? Oh, you have a question for him? Okay, please.
Thanks. So, um, thanks for the presentation. So I, I guess I do have a question about how, um, success rates correlate to persistence rates, which I, I believe you said we would get later. Because if it turns out, of course, that our face-to-face classes are both producing higher success rates and higher persistence rates, then that would suggest to me that we ought to be putting more resources on the face-to-face classes. So the editorial comment I wanted to make is that faculty at the colleges are experiencing a situation where the, as we've heard, uh, trustee Reese frame this very neatly, many students are electing to take online classes over face-to-face classes. We, as teachers, understand that most students that we serve do better in face-to-face environments. So we have this, this dilemma that we're confronted with, right? But what's happening at the college level is that classes that don't fill face-to-face are frequently getting converted into online classes, so we can capture that enrollment, even with those lower success rates. My very strong sense is that the district would be well-served, and this is a discussion that DAS has had a number of times, if we protected even the low-enrolled face-to-face classes to ensure that we're serving our students properly. So that would require probably, a bit of expense on the front end, but the idea is that we're investing in bringing students back to, to campus. And my hunch is that we'll see both improved success rates and improved persistence rates, and, uh, ultimately, um, we'll find that, um, we're doing a better job of, of serving our students. The other observation I wanted to, to make is about online education. And I think one thing that's sorely lacking for many of our students is some sort of orientation and training for online education, which is in fact different from face-to-face education, as many folks know. So while it may be an obstacle to enrollment in certain ways, my, my bet would be that an improved orientation and training mechanism for students who enroll online would lead to higher success rates online. Again, it would require an investment and some will to probably take some losses upfront, so that we could generate gains in the long run. Thank you.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Thank you, Dr. Goldstein. Um, I, I was gonna follow up on this question about consultation, but I think you've, you've given plenty right, right there as, as, as a starting place, and I think one of the things that I think leads this board to need to consider is that we're the political body here. And if you think about the way that classes are funded, well, we get same dollars for an online class as an in-person class, maybe this SCIF formula should be adjusted in that way. If we truly care about success, maybe we actually need to pay for it in a, in a different way. Last thing that I, I wanna just notice on slide six, that, uh, on gender. Uh, we just blow through this, like, oh yeah, men don't go to college anymore. Like, wait, wait, we're missing something here. We've got, what, a twelve-point gap? A fifteen-point gap? And there's got to be something that we're figuring out. Chancellor, what are we doing here to capture all these guys who have disappeared? Do we have a plan? Sorry, I didn't, I didn't preview that one for you. It, it just like, I'm looking at the slide again.
So I'm gonna allow the college presidents to respond if they would like, but I will just say this to you, um, trustees. Again, I was saying that this conversation is so illustrative of like what we need to be talking about deeply with our colleagues around the table, and I think that's why I'm so excited about the PBIM Summit. That's why I'm excited about how do we start to center less necessarily the process part, but the like needy conversations that we need to be having? And that can weigh us to have these conversations about what will we protect, what will we do, how will we schedule, how are we gonna get, you know, yeah, men to come back to campuses and do these things. And so we're really committed to having those conversations. I wanna use the PBIM retreat also as a kickoff for, um, some of that work. Wanna look at the college presidents, if you, or did I do okay? Okay, President Bessakoff.
One thing that, uh, good evening, everyone. One thing that's been very gratifying this year is to have the uh, organizers of the one hundred black men of the Bay Area who put on an annual event for high school African-American males. Uh, they held it two years ago at Laney. Uh, they had it somewhere else last year, and they said, we wanna come back to Laney this year. And what's almost magical about this is it's going to be happening on the same day as our Career and Technical Education Open House, which means that, uh, those young men who are attending, um, and getting just some incredible mentorship and support, will also have the opportunity, uh, to visit many of our, uh, career education areas on the same day. And I think, as we go forward, I, I think that's something that, that's very important. And just on the other topic about online success and readiness, I, I'd like to share some, something else that's been happening. And really have to credit, um, really our, our tutors, uh, some of our tutoring, uh, our faculty who've provided leadership for tutoring as well. And then also just, um, our, our Dean of Liberal Arts, Beth Marr, they tried something a little bit cutting-edge this year. What they did was essentially the first two weeks of the Tutoring Center, which would normally be kind of quiet, right? People are just starting their classes. They actually had workshops, a number of workshops on information literacy, keys to success when studying online. Um, a lot of those things were activities very well-attended. And I think those are some things that will help us in terms of some of the problems we're seeing, uh, that are, that are bearing out in the data. And along the way, I just, I, I think those are exciting possibilities, especially as we look at supporting students while on their paths.
Thank you, Dr. Bessakoff, Dr. Richardson.
Yes, I just wanted to share that, um, speaking to what's happening in terms of young men, particularly black men, I had an opportunity to go to the Eight to Men Conference this past week, and one of the compelling features of that whole conference was that a lot of black young men don't see themselves in the college environment, but what inspires them is seeing teachers who look like them, seeing counselors and classified professionals who look like them. It makes all the difference. That's why it's so important, even in our marketing, that we be very, very inclusive, um, of black males. Uh, so that when they look at us and they look at, uh, you know, our marketing, they say, yeah, I do belong there. There, and then there's that sense of belonging piece. So I think it's critical in our hiring that we consider that if we're really serious about changing the numbers for, for males, and in particular for black males, as, as that is our focus at BCC, um, we have to walk the talk. One of the other things I wanted to just share, going back to an earlier question that you had, is that we get a tremendous amount of faculty-driven feedback in terms of the decisions that we make. Um, like the other colleges, we find that there is greater retention, um, greater persistence in in-person classes, but what we've also found that is, it's critical that we do it on a discipline-by-discipline basis. There's some disciplines, like multimedia, for example, where most of these people are working professionals. So the online classes work better for them. So rather than have a formula that we say, okay, we're gonna have fifty percent, you know, online and fifty, no, we have to look at the data, and then we have to determine discipline, discipline by discipline, what works best for our students. And so we've had very robust discussions with our faculty, our VPI, and our deans to get that feedback on the very, you know, specific discipline-related levels.
Thank you, uh, for that discussion. So, uh, with that, we will move to, um, approval of consent items by point one. Move approval.
Second.
Student trustee Massan?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Yes.
Trustee Napola Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
I'm abstaining right now.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So move to five point two, consider approval of out-of-state travel.
Uh, President, you approved the consent calendar, so.
Oh, that was it. Sorry. All right, so uh, we'll move to action items. Nine point one, board, consider Board of Trustees nominations for the CCCT Board elections.
Madam President?
Yes, trustee Whitrow?
I would move that we, uh, have seven votes, vote for the seven incumbents on here. Give each of the incumbents a vote.
Thank you, trustee Whitrow. Is there a second? New discussion? Just, uh, Vice President Quinlan?
So, so I have a question. My understanding is that we have till April first to approve this? That, that, that's what the election period is from?
You're cor, you're correct, trustee Quinlan, uh, Vice President Quinlan. So bar nominations for the California Community College Trustees Board, um, open from January one through April first. Um, so we want to agendize it on this meeting to, so that we can forward the board's nomination votes.
So my issue is, I, I sat through the, uh, online presentations, uh, the, the, um, the ones they did on the web. Uh, I sat through those. I've read all the biographies and everything, and I still have no idea whether one candidate is better than another idea, uh, another person's ideas. Um, and I'm kind of reluctant to just vote for incumbents because they're incumbents. So I don't know how we deal with that, I, how I deal with that question, uh, 'cause I don't feel comfortable making a decision now. If there's another way we can, uh, look at information that, that will differentiate these candidates, because they all pretty much say the exact same thing. And if that's true, it doesn't really matter who we vote for. Uh, so, that's, that's my issue.
Trustee, I probably.
So, uh, you know, a couple of options. Apparently, we can have this a little bit, we can have this submitted a little bit later, because it says no later than April twenty-five, so we have some time. Um, the other thing that might be helpful is that and more of that, in terms of, you can probably contact the individuals and talk to all of the, the candidates individually if you wanted to. And I think some of us also have a relationships or know some of the individuals. So I think the, the recommendations, and not necessarily all the incumbents, but, um, the, some of the recommendations, recommendations could be helpful. And I think in the past, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in the past, some of the candidates or some of the board members on our dais have actually spoken a little bit about the individuals. Then that might be helpful. Um, you know, you're not gonna really get to know them unless you talk to them individually, but at least it's better than not knowing anything at all.
Trustee Gonzalez, you want?
Well, I know we're in the middle Well, I know we're in the middle of a motion and that calls for a vote, but I'm wondering whether we might step back, given that one of our colleagues has raised a, a pretty con- serious question, like how are we casting our vote? And maybe we could have a slightly different process. And so I would suggest that we form a committee with trustee Quinlan and one or two other trustees to come back to the board with a recommended slate. And then it would give you plenty of time to help us um, with your wisdom and research. And maybe one of our colleagues would be interested in participating in that process. Uh, and then we could all feel good about the vote that we cast as a, as a board. What, what do you think about that?
Well, I'm cer- I'm certainly willing to do that.
Sure.
So there's a motion on the floor. So do, can you withdraw the motion?
Can we table the motion?
Well, we need to withdraw the motion and put another motion in that we have a committee that come in with a set of recommendations for the board and the whole.
Right. So you're withdrawing?
I'll make that motion. That we withdraw the current, uh, that we substitute, that we, we, we create a board committee to come back to the board at the next meeting with a recommendation, or prior to when the vote needs to happen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so now we have substitute motion we can vote on.
Student trustee Massan?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Whitro?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice? Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we need to say now or take volunteers for that committee? So we heard Vice President Quinlan.
And uh, trustee Whitro had volunteered as well.
Trustee Whitro? Yes. Okay, great, thank you.
All right.
So a move to nine point two, consider adoption of resolution number 2324, authorizing execution of professional services. Wearing document to renew people's soft regression testing.
Thank you, President Gonzalez Brito. This item coming for you tonight is a one-year renewal of Oracle's uh, contract, pursuant to which they will provide regression testing and related implementation services for the district's technology infrastructure build-out to help ensure access to the technical expertise required to support critical internal business process realignments that we've been working on throughout the district. A central aspect of the district's plan to improve modules and people's soft, to improve our aging technology framework district-wide is the customization of the contracts and finance modules, specifically in people's soft. Oracle's support augments the district's information technology department's internal experience with a deep understanding of the architecture of the people's soft software. Um, and Oracle's professional assistance includes, but is not limited to help with the requirements, uh, gathering that we're, we're required to do and associated testing to ensure the functionality for faculty, students, um, and our staff, as well as the implementation of best practices. So pleased to bring this item to you tonight.
Thank you, Chancellor. Oh, trustee Muskins, yes.
Um, so I was wondering if the increase um, from the increase for this contract is about $140 million more than last year's contract. I was wondering if that is because um, the contract is two years longer? Or is it because they are improving, um, or just because they are improving and adding more um, services? Since it is such a drastic increase, I just was curious.
Um, so I'm gonna, um, Director Mahuli is online, so I'll uh,
Yes.
Call on him, please.
Thank you, Chancellor. Um, yes, um, the contract, uh, it's a two-year contract. And also the increase, also we encounter a increase because of uh, the cost of living uh, increase. So all the, all the salary and hourly rate have increased a bit. So that's what the increase reflect. Thank you.
Thank you. That's trustee, uh, Napoleon Bellarice.
That was an excellent question. Thank you for asking that. Um, and thank you for answering too as well. I guess my question is just a more gen- uh, a more general question, which is, what are we doing with the technology and the finance modules? Because that has been a very long process of getting it right. So and are we ready for that question yet? I mean, okay, sure. But if we can come back with more information on that, that would be great.
No, I'm happy, I'm happy to respond to the question. I think it's a work in progress, you know, a continued one. And that's why Director Mahuli is really committed to working with district colleagues around this. So we have work groups and finance and human resources are making a commitment to seeing, you know, again, how we're sort of building so that we can actually do really good data collection, sharing, budget planning, those processes. And so we'll be coming back to you with some, you know, additional updates. But I will say it is still a work in progress. There's definitely friction points along the way with any rollout of things. And so that's why we're re- you know, investing to continue to make sure that it's refined for the district.
Thank you, Chancellor. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
I think we have a, a motion from trustee Johannes.
Second.
Student trustee Massan?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Whitro?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Abstain.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, and we'll move on to nine point three, which I think also has a presentation.
Yes, thank you so much, uh, President Gonzalez Brito. I'm pleased to have um, the district's Director of Employee Relations and Diversity Programs, Andrea Epps here tonight to present to you uh, the great work that's been happening um, on bringing forward the district's Equal Employment Opportunity Plan for you for consideration tonight.
Okay. Hello, there we are. Good evening, Board, Chancellor, staff, as well as our Peralta community. I have the privilege of presenting the district's proposed new EEO plan. Um, next slide, please. And so generally, an equal employment opportunity plan means a fair and equitable treatment in employment, promotion, training, and other personnel I actions. Our EEO plan is actually our roadmap or our covenant for how we as an institutional will ensure fair and equitable treatment of job applicants and our employees. Make it a little bit closer. Is that better? Perfect. Okay. It is our commitment that we will utilize a data-driven approach to identify our areas for improvement, as well as to determine what efforts we will utilize to improve our programs and strategies. Thank you. So I wanted to first uh, discuss kind of our EEO plan development. This differed significantly from the last time that the board approved an EEO plan, which was back in June of 2019. Um, between then and now, there were substantive revisions to the underlying regulations, which changed two facets of this process. First, the process by which we would actually be able to bring an EEO plan to the Board of Trustees. The second facet is that it changed the substance of our actual EEO plans. So first, um, in order to have an EEO plan, which is required by all California Community College districts, it's required that it be developed in collaboration with the district's EEO Advisory Committee, which this plan was. We had several meetings with our Advisory Committee, um, beginning back in 2021, um, because initially our new plan was going to be due in 2022. When the regulations changed, we then received an extension in terms of having to submit a new proposed EEO plan. We submitted our draft EEO plan to the State Chancellor's Office last year. That's part of the new process. Instead of an EEO plan then going first to the Board of Trustees for approval, now it is required that at least 90 days before a Board of Trustees adopts an EEO plan, it has to go to the State Chancellor's Office for approval, and we must also incorporate the feedback that they provide on the plan. That's why you may notice that in this board packet, there are two additional documents that previously did not exist when we presented our EEO plans. The first one is the EEO uh, feedback form. That is the form that we receive from the State Chancellor's Office when we submitted our draft EEO plan. In that feedback form, they identified if there were areas in which we needed to make substantial revision, or if there were no revisions or minor revisions that needed to be made to the plan in order for it to be considered approved. You will also notice that there is a second document that's identified as component 13, which is a matrix, which is a new part of the EEO plans. So I definitely want to distinguish that. The process is different, so that's why we're bringing it to you now after we have gone through the approval process with the State Chancellor's Office. And this was the first time that the State Chancellor's Office had an opportunity to go through this process. So I think that it took a little bit longer and there are probably a little more hiccups than we can anticipate in future um, times. I also wanted to note, just back on that previous slide, um, that in addition to developing our EEO plan with the collaboration of our Advisory Committee, after we received the approved EEO plan from the State Chancellor's Office, that we did take it to the PGC for their approval as well. So this was developed um, through our participatory process. Thank you. Now we're going to get into the actual components of the EEO plan. I do want to note that under the regulations, there are only 10 required components. You'll note that our plan has 15. Part of this is because the previous EEO plans that the district has approved included additional uh, components that did more than just meet the minimum requirement. And we thought that it was important that if we've already committed to certain things as an organization, that instead of stripping things out of our EEO plan, that we're continuing to identify our dedication to those particular goals. So you will note as I go through the, the component plans very briefly, that not all of them are required by the regulations, but we did decide to keep some of those additional um, components included. Um, the first component of our EEO plan is our introduction. I do want to note that this is not a required component, although it is recommended. And as I stated previously, our district has the history of including an introduction in our EEO plan, so that we can provide the narrative for the district. Also, we like to highlight some of the other work that we're doing as a district that really helps to ground this work and support this work. A couple of things that we wanted to note as supporting the work that we're going to be doing in our EEO plan is the very mission statement of the Peralta Community College District, as we have equity embedded right in our district mission. We've also further expanded that commitment through our board resolution on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Last year, um, when we first started the process of submitting our EEO plan to the State Chancellor's Office, we had just commissioned um, an equity audit to be completed. It has been completed since. And so we also wanted to highlight that that was work that we were doing um, in concert with this work. In October of last year, the board approved a small um, EEO Innovative Best Practices Grant, which we're going to use to help us with um, some of the robust training that we want to achieve under this new plan. I, um, although it's not indicated in the comprehens- I'm sorry, it's not indicated in the introduction, I did want to highlight that since we um, have submitted this plan to the State Chancellor's Office, we actually started our comprehensive classification and compensation study with McKnight, McKnight and Associates. And part of that is important in that one of the things that we're committed to doing is updating our job descriptions. And so a lot of that work is also being done by our comprehensive classification, classification and compensation study. So I just wanted to highlight some of the work that we're already doing and kind of connect the dots. In addition to uh, our section on our, our introduction, we elected to include uh, the optional component, next slide, please, of our definitions. And again, we have historically included definitions in our EEO plan. And here we've just taken the 12 definitions that are set out in the regulations and updated them to be consistent with the new regulations, uh, which included an updated definition of EEO and also updated definition of screening or selection procedure, um, so that it also explicitly includes consideration of equivalencies. Our next component, this is also uh, recommended, though not required, is our policy statement. And you have to have a policy that is consistent with the Board of Governors DEIA policy statement. The district does have this, and we've set this forth in previous EEO plans. And so we wanted to again set this um, in our new EEO plan, since we're already doing this work and have already announced this commitment. This begins the components that are required. Um, so the next uh, 10 components are actually required for the EEO plan. Uh, the first one is our delegation of responsibility, authority, and compliance. And what I wanted to highlight here uh, is first, the board's responsibility essentially remains the same as it has been under previous plans. Although I will note, um, as I did earlier in this presentation, that now the plan goes to the State Chancellor's Office prior to coming to the board. So it is worth noting that under the regulations now, any plan that comes before you um, should already be confirmed as being legally compliant according to the State Chancellor's Office. Um, second, I did want to note that the chancellor's role is essentially the same with a very small exception. Um, and that is that they direct the publication of the annual report to the trustees. Um, the regulations also change to now include an annual review under component 13, which is the matrix that you have in your board packet. And so previously, this form um, would go through the Vice Chancellor of Human Resources off- office as something entitled the Multiple Methods Strategy Form. But now they have changed it to incorporate this as part of component 13. So we will be coming forward with an annual review of that. Um, lastly, I will note that the EEO officers' work pretty much stays the same. I will say that the regulations have definitely set the tone in the review by the State Chancellor's Office to emphasize the importance of this work not being siloed with one person within the organization. So in terms of the first feedback form that we received from the State Chancellor's Office, there was definitely a push uh, for that like component 13 part to look at how many different people throughout the organization are aware of the work and actively engaged in, in follow-through with that. And lastly, I did want to highlight that uh, our EEO Advisory Committee is charged with assisting with the development and implementation of the plan. It is required under the uh, the regulations that each district have an advisory committee. Um, I did want to highlight that previously the regulations required that the governing board be responsible for developing and then adopting the district-wide EEO plan. However, under the new regulations, it's to be developed in collaboration with the district's uh, Advisory Committee. And the composition of our Advisory Committee remains the same from the previous um, EEO plan, with the exception of us updating the title um, from DSPS Coordinator to uh, be consistent with kind of the new title, which is the SAS Coordinator. But we do make sure that we have a diverse composition um, on our Advisory Committee. This is another part of the EEO plan that is required. Um, the new regulations indicate that the process that has to be followed to investigate EEO complaints is the same procedure that we use for unlawful discrimination complaints, when previously they did not specify what the procedure was. This does not constitute a, a material change for us here at Peralta, as even under previous EEO plans, we had identified the same process in terms of any EEO complaints that we received. Um, it is worth noting, though, that the district may return without action any EEO complaint that, that is inadequate. So that is a difference. Here we have our next required component, which is the notification to district employees. And we're agreeing to a more robust notification process than in previous EEO plans. Um, for example, we now have information regarding EEO compliance during our new hire orientation. And although we already have information um, regarding EEO requirements And although we already have information um regarding EEO requirements, recognizing bias, and unconscious bias in our presentation that are given to people participating in hiring committees, we're going to uh create kind of a more expansive uh section within that presentation. So we definitely want to make sure that word is getting out regarding what our EEO plan is and what our commitments are in terms of this work. So this is one of the um material changes to the EEO regulations in terms of now there are three groups that must undergo training. Um we have our screening and selection committees, our advisory committee, and also the board of trustees must now undergo training um on EEO program requirements, the requirements of state and federal non-discrimination laws, identification and elimination of bias in hiring, the educational benefits of a diverse workforce, and the role that the EEO advisory committee plays in drafting and implementing a district EEO plan. So you'll see that in our follow-ups, those will be one of our next steps after we have an approved EEO plan is to schedule the training for our board of trustees. Another uh required component is our annual written notice to community organizations. Um we have amended this list and received feedback from our advisory committee um so that they could identify a number of these organizations. And the goal with providing our EEO plan to these agencies is to build partnerships with community organizations, especially in those communities in which we need greater outreach and targeted recruiting. This and the next few session sections are a little more complicated in terms of this is where, in my opinion, the substantive changes to the regulations really make the most impact in terms of the work that the district has to do. Um so the district will essentially have to conduct multiple analysis of its applicant pool, meaning people who have applied for positions here. And we will also have to look at who we then end up hiring. Additionally, we will need an analysis that identifies what our applicant pool is, meaning that for where we are geographically located, um how many people in our geographical region are actually qualified to apply for our positions? So we'll be looking to have these data analysis conducted by a consultant because essentially we need someone who can compile the data to identify those three separate snapshots. Um the one that's going to be the most difficult has to do with the availability analysis, which is how many people living in this geodr- in this geographical region are actually qualified to apply for certain positions at Peralta. Because we need to track if we actually have the number of people who are available applying for those positions. Or do we have an impact in who we're able to hire because we don't even have certain candidates who are available to apply, choosing to apply with Peralta? And so the analysis will require us to look at three separate snapshots and then determine what those findings mean. Um at the time that we submitted our EEO plan to the state chancellor's office for their review and approval, um many districts had indicated to them that they did not yet have the data sets and the analysis that were required by the regulations. And so the advice that we received from the chancellor's office was to explicitly state that in your plan and to identify what your plan is to have that analysis completed. So that's what we've done in this plan. We've indicated that we will um engage a consultant to compile and prepare the analysis of the workforce and the applicant pool. We will then incorporate as an appendants the current workforce utilization demographics, our external de- availability demographics, and the applicant pool demog- demographics. Um it's also important that we uh represented that at least at at least one of the meetings that the advisory committee will be holding every year, we will be discussing these data points. Um as it currently exists in the EEO plan, we have our workforce utilization demographics, but they're just the numbers. So we would also like to have the numbers presented in a more user-friendly fashion, such as percentages and charts, so that we can really understand what the numbers mean to us as an organization. So for that part of that um of the EEO plan, which is component ten, we've represented to the state chancellor's office that we will have a consultant compile those different data sets, and then we will return for the advisory committee to review them and analyze them. This is component eleven, which has to do with our data utilization and what's called an underrepresentation analysis. Part of the reason that we need an availability analysis is because that's how we get to determine whether or not we have underrepresentation, which is representation below eighty percent of what is available within our area. Um so part of this underrepresentation analysis will be complete by the consultant that we are going to engage to complete those data sets. Um we've also represented this to the state chancellor's office, and we are not the only district who does not yet have the data sets prepared. Um I also wanted to highlight that in terms of the um underrepresentation analysis that um from the consultant that I've been getting information from in terms of a proposal, they indicated that this is something that many districts are consulting out for, since this is the first time that the district itself has to develop its own availability analysis. Under the previous regulations, a district only had to engage in this particular analysis if the data was provided by the state chancellor's office. So now it's incumbent upon the districts to generate the availability analysis and then uh do the underrepresentation analysis to determine whether you have any categories where there is uh representation below eighty percent. Our component twelve is maybe subject to change. We do not yet have the data regarding underrepresentation. These are the strategies that we identified we may, we do not have to use if underrepresentation is identified in our data. And I think it's important to highlight that one of the reasons that we pick these very strategies is depending on where there's underrepresentation, you're going to have a different response to target it. For example, if what we find from our data is that we don't have um enough African-American females applying for a faculty position, for example. So there's no way that we could have accurate representation upon hire because they're not really comp- uh constituting our applicant pool. Then we would be looking at targeted recruitment. If you find that there is an issue, for example, between we have um certain applicants who are applying, but for some reason they don't make it to being offered the position, then we're looking at how we can better train our screening and hiring committees to kind of catch that space and time. So this um the strategies will definitely be driven by what is what comes out of the analysis of our underrepresentation data. Now this responds to that other handout that was in the board packet, the new uh component thirteen matrix. And so essentially, um what has been required is that districts identify what they're going to be doing in terms of pre-hiring, hiring, and post-hiring strategies. As now they're looking at what happens at various snapshots, both before people actually become employees, when they're interviewing, and then who becomes the successful candidate. And so we identified some of the strategies that we would be willing to use at each point. Um a lot of these strategies are things that are already at work in the district. And so that's one of the reasons that they were added to the list. Um I did want to highlight that in terms of like updating the EEO webpage, that was something that we were starting to look at doing prior to having our EEO plan approved by the state chancellor. We were already in the process of having the equity audit conducted. Um as it pertains to like post-hiring strategies, it's my understanding that the campus and climate surveys, as well as exit interviews, are strategies that we already utilize. So now we'll just be looking at how we take that information and really target it to address any issues that are pointed up kind of through this this snapshot by our data. And in conclusion, I again wanted to highlight that we do have an EEO plan that was approved by the state chancellor's office. There was just minimal feedback on one component, which was component eleven, I believe. And that was cured um after we received that feedback. In terms of the data will no longer just be reliant on um census data, but that we will be using a myriad of sources to compile our availability analysis. Um I also wanted to highlight that fortunately, uh the plan was also approved by the PGC during our participatory process. Um after the board meeting and after the approval of this, I do look forward to having the opportunity to move forward with the more robust data analysis that's required under components ten, eleven, and twelve. Um we will also be scheduling EEO trainings for the board and for our advisory committee. Um additionally, we will start working on improving the uh trainings for our selection, hiring, and committee members. And then lastly, I wanted to let you know that we will be coming back to the board with the annual EEO certification after we have completed the robust data analysis. And so that part will include the underrepresentation analysis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board, trustee Ahnus?
Again, thank you for the um presentation. Um so I have a quick question. I'm pretty sure the answer is no. But I'll still ask, um because you mentioned that we have to now do the availability analysis and underrepresentation analysis necessarily, it's needed. Um I'm not saying against it. But because previously um district or the yeah, the district would provide that data, they're saying now that they do not, they no longer, or they haven't before, and they need this extra data, we have to go out and get consultants to do so. Is there any funding involved with that? Because they're asking for additional work that was not part of our budget, had nothing to do, and this is in order to serve us and them as well.
Right. And so to my knowledge, there is no additional funding for it. What the state chancellor's office has done in terms of trying to build the internal capacity for people to do the analysis, they have multiple trainings on the Vision Resource Center um regarding just how to compile these data sets and what the expectation is. Um however, I do think that for people who are not data people, it's going to be challenging. Um I I've stepped through all of the trainings. I am not a data person. Um so in terms of being able to prepare that type of analysis, it seemed like a pretty heavy lift.
Yeah, I I teach data analytics. I I I know my students have a tough time and they're in that whole program. So people who are not even in it, that's why I'm like wondering, it's gonna take some time. Um but thank you. Voicing a concern.
Thank you.
Vice president Quinman.
So I guess the question I have is uh areas where we're short of uh a meeting uh what would be considered, I guess, a represented population. Do do we do or have we done research on why we may not have the at both either the number of qualified applicants or the number of people being hired? Uh people that may we put out a hiring request for, but they decided not. But my my main concern is the cost of living in this area, availability of housing in this area. Uh you know, based on the wages that this district pays. I'm not trying to make an argument for more wages or anything, but to me, it's a reality. It's um and have we looked at those differences in try- in, you know, in in impa- impact on our ability to achieve uh satisfactory represented populations?
We have not. Um I will say that one of the things that we're looking at in terms of the new type of availability analysis that has to be done um is that it's a smaller geographical area. Um so I think that that's good in terms of, I know previously some of the data points would, they just had kind of the Bay Area clumped is one thing, including like San Francisco. And I think that for people who live here, we recognize that having to cross the bridge could impact whether or not you're willing to apply for a position. Even if you, you know, show up as being someone who is available and qualified to apply, having to do that type of commute will then, you know, discourage you from wanting to apply for positions. Um so at least now in terms of the way that they're advising that we conduct or uh come up with the new availability data, I think that some of that has been taken into account in terms of restricting the geographical area. Um I also think that one of the things that we do have information about, but it's not compiled, is that when people are offered positions at Peralta and they choose not to take them, um HR does ask them, you know, maybe we ask you the reason that you are declining employment. So we do have data for people who are ultimately offered a position and choose not to take it, but I don't think that we have it compiled or we've presented it in a way where we've really analyzed. Are we consistently being told, you know, we're not accepting the position because of the pay or because of the cost of living in the area? But I do think it would be helpful since we have that data set from HR to figure out how to utilize it.
And I guess the last question, system-wide, is there and this is terrible analogy, but you know, professional football teams and baseball teams and athletes and business, they target people way before they're graduating in terms of doing outreach and communication with them and does the community college system in California do that when we're trying to develop a teaching core? Um is there, do we reach out to people and say, this is a possibility, are you interested? And try and uh cultivate those people to what we're trying to do in our community college system?
I'm not sure that we do um for people who are involved in in like doctoral programs to create that pipeline.
So there are some programs um in in addition to uh what Director Eps, again, how expansive they are is the question. But we do have our own faculty diversity internship program here um in the district. I'm very proud of the work and Vance and Win from COA is actually our coordinator at this time. And so really working on giving faculty members, particularly diverse faculty, an opportunity to be here um supported by a mentor faculty member going through the curriculum. Him and I have actually met and we're looking at how we expand that. So some of that is we're working on looking at a project where we actually reach out to all of our graduate schools and the area and host like an actual like welcome, proud to learn about our disciplines, learn about what we do, learn about teaching in California's community colleges as a pipeline. We're also looking at a partnership with pipelines to possibilities, which places HBCU uh graduates into sort of these opportunities to teach. And so we're working through some of those areas. Um so a- again, but many of these are not, to Director Eps's point, like sort of system-wide particular things, um but they are sort of managed and nurtured um in this um seventy-two districts um in our state.
Assistant Solas Yuen.
Thank you, Director Eps. Um uh this is an overwhelming task that you're trying to put into a document. And I understand that we have a legal requirement to comply, and so we have to file a thing to fulfill a legal requirement. And then we also have the substantive work that we want to do. Um and sort of finding that with the resources that your office has, obviously overly abundant resource
Right.
Uh that your office has um is is a real challenge. Um one thing that I would just recommend right away uh is turn the numbers into percentages or put them right along because that tells a much more interesting story than the raw numbers. And I, you know, spent fifteen minutes just taking the numbers and putting them into an Excel spreadsheet to look. And it's like, oh, that's what we're looking at. Okay, good. That's helpful, that that's a better roadmap for us. Um I I think it would be really helpful to include part-time faculty here. They're and it's like they don't exist in this plan, and I think that's actually a real problem. And a missed opportunity, because if we're trying to have uh some changes within the ranks of the full-time faculty, the feeder for that is our part-time faculty, and so that's gonna tell us quite a bit. So I think frankly, that's critical. And if it were me, I would be including that data um here as well. This thing about underrepresentation, I think, is critical. And it's just, we have to nail that. We have to identify and be clear. These are the groups that are underrepresented in this district. Uh we could look right now and say, yep, Native Americans, none uh in so many ranks, and that's like a no-brainer. We know that's true. We need to do something about that. Um even without making any other guesses, we know that that uh is true. So I'm wondering when it's due and whether we could just pause for a minute and then come back and revise this with just some of these kind of obvious things. And again, I don't mean to be critical because I get, you know, it's like you're juggling a thousand things without adequate resource. And I don't think anybody doubts the sincerity of anybody in this room in taking this work really, really seriously. The last thing that I want to maybe suggest we could include that isn't a legal thing, but it's maybe something that speaks to the substance of our district. I don't know that there's a district that is more committed to equity and racial justice and inclusion than this district. Like I really don't. And I think one piece of evidence that we could look to is the Peralta Online Equity Initiative. It's an amazing, powerful initiative that has been staffed by faculty in this district who took seriously the notion that if we're going to teach online, we need to do that equitably. We need to figure out how to train our colleagues in this, in this. They came up with a rubric that is used statewide. And so when we think about, and I mean, it's a really serious thing, just go do the, do a quick search, Online Equity Initiative, Peralta. It's a tool that our colleagues all over the state are using. And so as we talk about what are we doing here to improve our equity and diversity and inclusion, I think we should be including all of the things that we do. So that's thinking about the care of our students. We create an environment where we have food pantries, where we have bus passes, where we have coaches like Coach Beam who go out of their way to do this very work. So I think this report could be made so much more exciting if we actually spoke to the substance of it. Trustee Withrow is often talking about bringing it, making it come alive. And, and I think that we could turn this required legal document into something that was really inspirational to us all and then much more useful. I think this is a fine start. And I think that within this room and in this district, we have so many resources we can and should be tapping into to just, to just fill it out. But there are some real quick ones, like include percentages and include part-time faculty. So thank you so much. And thank you Chancellor for making sure this got onto our agenda today.
Trustee Napoleon Reese.
And after, even though I looked at this earlier, my closed reading made me realize in your presentation made me realize that this was already sent to the chancellor's office and it needed to go to the chancellor's office before it comes to us for adoption. And they only had one comment, which you had already spoken to. So are you saying go back? I guess I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
Look, we have some requirements. At some point we must adopt this. If, if we must adopt it today and it's like, we're out of time and we're out of staff, let's just check this off, then okay. But if in fact, there is opportunity and resource, add another thing to your plate. If there is that, then I think we could take a break, take a beat, but I don't want to hold us up. I, you know, I, I'm trying to add value to the thing that we have in front of us, which is a great start and could be better. Thanks.
So I really appreciate the comments, the feedback, and obviously Director Epps's incredible work shepherding this forward. I think part of what you illustrated tonight, Trustee Gonzalez, you in, is the district's deep commitment and this should be in our strategic plan. It is in the plans of the colleges. It is like a multimodal thing. And so for me, the EO plan is one component of really all of our work. And so we really need to be forwarded on that. So we do bring the plan, you know, forward to you tonight to do that, but we make a commitment to you that we're really trying to revision and interweave all of these things together so that where the Peralta Equity Rubric sits may not be equal employment opportunity as well, but it's around the PD of folks to better support, right? The, you know, diversity of faculty and who are coming to work with us. And so I think we can begin to work on those iterations. I think our most thing is that we're waiting for you to approve the plan so we can get the data. We can't begin to have the conversation about where we're going to go until you approve the plan and we can say, let's go get our data, let's get the committee working on those things. So I'd offer to you a promise and a request that maybe we could approve the plan tonight, getting really stellar remarks from the state chancellor's office, frankly, on meeting the components and then moving forward and then coming back in a year as promised. And, and certainly before, if we want to do a study session to talk about it further.
Chancellor, you are a woman of your word. And with that, your word, I will move approval of this document.
Student trustee Massan?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Pope?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Director Epps. Thank you. So with that, we'll move to ten point one, Board of Trustees Reports, right to my left.
Good evening, everyone. I'm happy to report that the first district-wide student leader meeting was very successful and Natasha and I are planning on hosting more meetings soon. Natasha and I were able to learn more about what those students needs and what type of resources they are lacking. I was also able to meet with Sajal Babariah, the Peralta Federation of Teachers Union Executive Director, to brainstorm some workshops for associated students that Natasha and I will co-host in April. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have a report so much as I want to just offer again, my congratulations to our newly tenured faculty. It was really great to be in community. As I've said over and over again on the dais, I, I got elected in 2020 in the middle of a pandemic. And so I was hearing the dates of when everyone was, a lot of the folks were hired. I'm like, oh, that's when I got elected. So I guess we're on the same trajectory, which is great. So entering into my fourth year with all of them and all of you, it was really great to be here. So thank you very much for that, Chancellor.
All right. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I was going to go to the closing of Black History Month and Lunar New Year Celebration at Berkeley City College. I was able to go. Special thanks to Ramona Butler and the other woman. Her name's not in the email and I don't, I don't remember her name, sorry. But you were great too for setting it all up. I had, they had wonderful food. I had fried rice and mac and cheese, right? For both cultures, which they did well. Also apparently Miss Ramona Butler is an African drummer as well. So along with the team, she entertained us and they had another individual from KQED who spoke about his journalism, who was the son of another BCC employee. So that was really nice. And secondly, I just want to, so I take my walks around Lake Merritt. I take my dog around there. So the other day I decided to stop at the gardens, the Botany Gardens. And I, I do that every once in a while and I just happened to come across a, just an area where they were plotting, plotting, where they were growing some vegetables and fruits. So I just kind of took a look at the sign. I just kind of read it and I'm going to read it to you. What's going on here is what it says. A new veggie slash flower garden has been created by the students of Merritt College Landscape Horticulture with lots of help from City of Oakland volunteers. The garden will be tended by the urban garden class LH dash five oh one. Big ups to them. On Tuesday and Wednesday mornings, it goes on to say, please don't take the food, right? And then at the end it says, all produce will be donated to local shelters and food banks. So I just thought that was cool and I kind of just saw it on my walk. I wasn't looking for anything. So Peralta's everywhere. Catch me at the lake. Thanks.
So I attended both tonight's events with a tenure graduation. I, I mean, it's an amazing event. I also was at the Pillars of Democracy event where our esteemed professor, Lenny Gostis, was one of the presenters. And what concerns me about both of those events is the danger that both tenure and our free press are in. And I'm talking about a press that's not driven by the number of hits or bites or advertising dollars, but is based on the need for our communities have for news that reflects their needs and what's going on in them. And then also the, you know, the threat tenure faces where teachers can teach what they know and what they believe in, supposed to what a governor or a board of trustees across the state may want them to teach. And I think those are, as we celebrate these events, I think it's important to remember, you know, this, these things are the very basis of our democracy. And it's important that we think about as we enjoy these events and recognize the achievements, that we think about protecting them and what we need to do to protect them.
Any to my right?
Thank you. I've been particularly impressed with the student leadership in this district lately. Our two student trustees are on fire. And they have been just lighting it up all over the district. And through an introduction that they made with me to a senator at Berkeley City College, I was listening to his story and, you know, we, we talk about that, our, our outreach and our pre-tuition program. And he was sharing with me his, his story, you know, it's like been out of the workforce for a while, he's a young dad, not feeling a lot of momentum in his life. And he was hanging out somewhere and he saw, fall is free. On a flyer. And it's like, free tuition? I could get an education. It works. At least it did with him. And I think that that is the kind of thing that is making a reputation for us in the district. But I think the other thing that's making a reputation for us in the district is, is the quality of the student leadership that we have here. And it's just, right now is just really, really outstanding. So I want to just public shout out to both of our student trustees and the rest of the student government. I also had the opportunity to go to the Faculty Associations Conference statewide a couple of weeks ago in Sacramento and then follow up with the lobby day and get to visit some of the ledge delegation with student leaders. You know, it doesn't feel like, and in this moment, and I think President Sinse Harry from the PFT spoke to this, doesn't feel like, you know, the house is burning down right now. But for a lot of these students, it really is. And the inequity of the funding formula as, as, you know, in comparison to the K-12 system, the CSU system, the UC system, it's just, it just doesn't work. And we know that it doesn't work. And the inequity of this so-called student-centered funding formula becomes really clear when you look at the data across the state, you look at every single college and you say, has anybody really moved the needle on equity? Not really. The funding formula isn't helping us. It's penalizing us. And so just looking at the financial aid formulas that penalize urban districts with high costs of living, which then artificially suppress the number of really desperate, in need students because of that formula, that doesn't make any sense. Similarly, the funding formula that counts FTES and then adds up all your little part-time students and then funds you that way, as though five part-time students seeing a counselor takes the same resource that one? It doesn't work that way. The funding formula is broken. It has never worked. It is killing us. And the students there were really articulate with our ledge delegation in this regard. So I'm really proud to have gone to that conference, worked with faculty and with students and staff on this. And I look forward to bringing in some other colleagues there next year. So I'm looking forward to Apahi, the Asian Pacific Americans in Higher Ed Conference, which is coming up. I think it is now sold out. But you know, if you sneak in, we have a former president who has some clout there. We have a chancellor who I think has some clout there. And maybe can sneak you in. Anyway, it's just downtown Oakland in about a week and a half, some, two weeks, something like that. All right. Thank you.
I too met with our exceptional students and I was so invigorated by our conversations. I really was. They left me inspired and the reason they left me inspired is because they're so incredibly intelligent, the depth of their understanding, their dedication and commitment to doing what's right, to actually creating the time that they probably don't have to meet with students, listen to students, meet with us and have conversations with us is really pretty remarkable. And I am utterly, utterly inspired. I was disheartened though by the fact that we don't do a good job orienting our student trustees, which is a conversation that emerged. And, and I am particularly disheartened by that because I realized that with our president, when we first appointed our president, and I said that on the dais, that when we do not orient and give training to the people that sit at our dais, we are actually doing a disservice to them and we're doing a disservice to the district. And with all the acronyms and with parliamentary procedures and Roberts Rules of Orders and all of this information that we ask our, our new board members and our student trustees to know, like right from the get-go, I am, I'm just kind of a little ashamed that we've done that. So one of the things that I'm doing with our student trustee is I've created a student trustee orientation for another district, a draft for another district. So I'm going to share it with these two student trustees and they can work with you Chancellor to kind of modify it in a manner that works for you all, that's practical. And what I love again about these two trustees is that they're interested in creating and adding to the infrastructure beyond their, like beyond their tenure and really contributing to the legacy. So that's just remarkable and that's fabulous. And I think that, you know, we need to do, we need to continue doing what we can to actually capture the unique spirit of our students so that we cultivate it, so that we encourage them, so that they can be movers and shakers in places and spaces that we just don't have the age, the capacity, or the ability to be able to do, but they do. So thank you for what you both do and, or whatever we could do to continue to help you, we will. Oh, and newly tenured individuals, how exciting was that to be able to see you all get to that point?
Thank you. Senator trustee Massand?
Hi, hello. Thank you so much for saying that. I was also really inspired by that conversation with trustee Napoleon Bellarice. It was great to learn from her professionalism, her experience as a trustee and how our leadership can extend to a state level, which is something I think we're both, me and Naomi, interested in looking into and pursuing, and pursuing. Separately, I'd like to report on highlights from Naomi and I's student governance meeting. We were able to host around fifteen students throughout the district. We, with the help of Chancellor Gilkerson, appointed student representatives for PBAM committees. And we also discussed how to increase student engagement in Peralta. It was exciting to hear from students and learn how we can work on bettering the training process for associated students. This is something that I think Naomi and I will also be working on through our remaining term. Thank you to Chancellor Gilkerson for inviting us to host in our conference room, speaking on PBIM to students, as well as to Chetan Henry for helping us set up tech and food. We're also really appreciative to Gabriel Martinez, a counselor at BCC, and Mark Johnson for talking to students and documenting the event. That is all I have to share and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And just quickly, I want to thank, I met with the Peralta Classified Senate a couple of weeks ago and want to thank them for taking the time, talked a lot about professional development and not limiting professional development to flex days and also ensuring that classified professionals can attend flex days and other professional development activities when they have to often be at their desk because they're serving students. And so potentially having professional development days when the campuses are closed. So I want to thank them for their time and congratulations to the faculty today. It was a wonderful event and I think he said it. All right. I think that's it. And that's, I always forget.
My big moment. Our announcements for this evening. This is number one, this is spring break, the midpoint in the semester, but it's not too late to enroll. We have eight week short-term classes on a wide range of topics starting on March 18th. Spring is free for California residents to apply for financial aid and take six credits and more. Please visit the college websites for more information. Number two, Peralta Colleges are celebrating Women's History Month in March with events at each of the campuses. Again, visit the college websites for details. Number three, the Bond Measures Oversight Committee will meet here in this very district boardroom tomorrow night, March 13th at 5:30 PM. The meeting is also available via Zoom. Visit the Peralta website for details. And lastly, our next professional development. And lastly, our next professional development spring speaker series event is on Thursday, March 14th at 12:30 PM at Laney Room F170 and via Zoom. And we'll feature Laney Art Faculty Member Lisa Litsky. For details, visit the Peralta website's Events Across the District section of the homepage.
Thank you, Vice President Quinlan. And I think with that, the meeting is adjourned.